11th, 2023, East Whiteland Township Board of Supervisors.
Board of Supervisors.
Meeting. Okay, so please stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you. I'd like to introduce everyone here at the table. On my far left is our new Township Manager, Steve Brown. Supervisor Peter Fixler. Vice Chair, Rich Orlo. And our Solicitor, Bernadette Kearney. I'd like to start off by indicating that we had executive sessions that were held this afternoon on January 11th at 5:00 pertaining to real estate, personnel, and legal matters. During 2022, we had an inordinate amount of personal hardships to our residents, and the Board would like to send our best wishes and good thoughts for a happy and healthy 2023 to our hard-working women and men that make up our staff and our volunteer boards. And maybe we could add a little hope for this year and pray for someone in the township to win the upcoming $1.3 billion mega lottery. In any event, along those lines, we'd like to start off with some celebratory items. First, we would like to recognize Steve Brown for his promotion as our new Township Manager. And I have a few comments that I would like to mention, and I believe John Nagel, former Township Manager, will also magically appear on the Zoom screen if he's able to make it and have a few words as well. But Steve joined East Whiteland Township in 2017, serving primarily in the role of the zoning and the codes enforcement officer, before taking on additional duties as the Township's Director of Property and Recreation. In 2018, Steve was promoted to the Assistant Township Manager position and Director of Codes and Life Safety, where he oversaw various departments, including building and code enforcement, fire services, EMS, and planning and development. Steve brings a wealth of experience in local government with a career spanning more than 35 years. He graduated with a bachelor's degree in public administration from Juniana College and a master's degree in public administration from the University of Delaware. Steve began his career in government at the city of Reading. He was later hired as the Assistant Township Manager in neighboring West Whiteland Township. Before becoming Township Manager in London Grove in Southern Chester County. Steve is a 35-year member of the ICMA, which is the International City County Management Association, and currently serves as the Township's representative to the TMAC organization, which is the Transportation Management Association of Chester County, where he recently participated in their Strategic Planning Institute initiative. Steve is also the loyal husband of Gene Brown, who grew up in East Whiteland Township and who's in the audience. Wave. And he's the proud father of two great sons, Daniel and Andrew, and three spoiled cats. In his spare time, Steve volunteers with the Boy Scout Troop Number 78, which I believe Rich has been part of. And he's very involved with the Radnor Race Committee, and which in turn supports the Brandingwine Conservatory. So with those comments, again, welcome aboard, Steve. And I think we've got some more accolades that former Township Manager, John Nagel, who's on the Zoom call, would like to add. John?
Thanks, Scott. I think I have successfully eluded my computer. As Steve knows, I would rather be at the meeting in person tonight, but for personal reasons, I cannot attend. Scott did start off with Steve's great resume. And one of the things that he did highlight that Steve and I both benefited from and at least that worked carefully is we both spent some time in the grand city of Reading, Upper Berch County, at different points, not together. It's a great experience up there, and one I'll never forget. And I'm sure Steve has similar memories of being there. But just getting back to some comments in general, Steve has definitely earned it and deserves the opportunity to serve as Township Manager of East Whiteland Township. He has taken on anything and everything that he's been assigned, and then some. He's elevated projects, programs, and services under his watch. And I'm going to give a short list, but I'm sure I'm going to miss a few things that Steve has done and will be doing going forward. Back to Mill Park, which actually was an 18-year-old sign when I got here years ago. And that development is just blossoming every day. Stormwater management, open space, Spring Ridge and Balderson to name two very challenging properties that Steve has been laboring on for quite some time. Not anything having to do with anything he's done wrong. He's done all the right things. It's just challenging properties that require a lot of TLC. Tonight, the Board's going to consider life safety inspections. A lot of Steve's time here has been spent on fire EMS. And so he's done a great job with the help of Greg Lewis and his crew on reorganizing and restructuring and reestablishing the fire EMS department. Same thing, similar, with the planning, development, and zoning restructuring. Not as much of a dramatic set of changes, but I think a more cohesive group. And since he went through the ranks here, he knows that functioned well. And I think it's the best it's ever been in East Whiteland Township. One thing that many of us take credit for, but Steve is the one that started it, is the DCED grant for the five-year Strategic Financial Plan. And that grant and that study is going to pay dividends to the township, its residents' businesses for many, many, many years to come. Sidney Road and Mill Lane Trail connection to Chester Valley Trail, American Rescue Plan funding, the zoning ordinance review, and the staff leaves onto Park Recreation Board and now Friends of the East Whiteland Township Parks and Recreation 501(c)(3), and also managing recreation staff. That is the amongest effort. It takes an incredible amount of Steve's time. And he's very patient in shepherding that group, those groups long. And I admire his patience and perseverance with that group. In general, Steve embraces diversity. He's able to bring divergent positions to consensus. He understands and encourages intergovernmental cooperation. Some of the examples of that are the Chester County Consortium of Managers, the Delaware Valley Trust, and the local group, the Transportation Management Association of Chester County. I'll talk privately about that because that was quite a handoff. And I think he got the short end with that one. But it's a great group and just adds to the portfolio of things that Steve has done here in East Whiteland Township. We have a culture here of collegial, cooperative, and compromise. That was very evident through this whole transition and succession planning process. And Steve embraces all those things and has done exemplary work during his whole time here. He recognizes that the needs and the expectations vary for the community, and he adjusts his actions based on those different needs and expectations. He's inherited a responsive and dynamic organization, but he's already hit the ground running while trying diligently to continuously assess the purpose of what we do as an organization. Steve clearly understands the value of public service and inspires excellence in governing, leadership, and management. I want to put a plug in for Steve and the employees, just having been here for eight years. He accepts the challenge of fostering professional and personal development of all employees. And I think that's something that I would, if I had one thing to wish to Steve to carry forward, is that we can continue that development. I think it's very good for the employees. It's good for the organization. And it's good for the community. So with that, I'll conclude my comments and just say congratulations, Steve, and Gene, and best wishes. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Do we have any comments from the audience or anyone out there? Rich, anything you would like to add?
Yes, and in addition to knowing Steve here at East Whiteland, I have been honored to know him how many years since our kids were not as tall as this table? Yeah, it doesn't. Going back through scouting with all our kids. And every experience from freezing in tents to getting soaked in tents was, I guess, a lot of fun.
Character building, I think, Rich. I'd like to say a word or two. Oh, I'm sorry, Peter.
All I want to say, Steve, is I just look, and coming into my second year as a Township Supervisor, I look forward to working with you in the future.
Well, thank you, everyone. Thank you, Scott, Rich, and Peter and John, for your kind words. I'm a little surprised I'm not a deeper shade of red than I normally am because I do not like the limelight, but thank you again for the kind words. And I just have a short statement. I'm going to say it's an honor and a privilege to be appointed and to serve as East Whiteland Township's Township Manager. And I greatly appreciate the faith and trust that the Board of Supervisors has placed in me. To me, East Whiteland is one of the premier communities in Chester County and frankly, in all of southeastern Pennsylvania. And I'm very excited to serve in this role. I do want to take the time just to recognize the hard work of the supervisors and managers that have gone before and have served this community. We don't get to this point overnight. There's been a lot of hard work put into this community by supervisors, managers, and staff. And as a manager, I especially want to recognize the hard work and efforts of John Nagel, who is my immediate predecessor, Terry Woodman, who was John's predecessor, and a gentleman named Don Reiman Schneider. I don't know if any of you remember Don. I remember Don. He was manager here for 38 years. And I didn't know him real well. I just knew him because I worked in the neighboring community that Scott mentioned, that I won't mention again. And he was an incredible guy. Anyway, if you're at all familiar with government in Chester County, you'll know that those are big shoes to fill, meaning those three folks who had this position before me. So I plan to do my best to uphold their, the board's, and the community's tradition of excellence and good government, and will work hard with the board and staff and our community to accomplish just that. So thank you very much. All right. As we continue on the celebration, I will add that this is Peter Fixler's one-year anniversary as a supervisor. And Steve, I have to ask you this. What were you doing 99 years ago? Well, I have to tell you, some more of the celebration is the fact that in our audience and also, I think, on Zoom, we wanted to celebrate two birthdays of residents in this township. One gentleman here has a birthday on January 17th, correct? Jack Goodrich will turn 100 years old on January 17th. Is that awesome or what? And how long have you lived in East Whiteland?
About 54 or 55 years.
That's all?
Yeah.
Boy, I bet you you could tell some stories, huh?
We met Don Reiman Schneider when he first became manager.
Really? Awesome. And you were an engineer at United Technologies for many years as well?
Yes, I worked for United Engineers, a local engineering and construction company, for 40 years.
Listen, I have to say again, fantastic. Happy birthday. Happy birthday. And also, I guess you were a World War II veteran?
Yes.
Super. Also, on the 99-year plan is another resident who is not here. I don't believe he's on the Zoom though, but it is John Cochran, who I think turned 99 in September. And he's a resident of Spring Mill Farms. And if you're out there, John, again, happy birthday. Fantastic. 99 years. And I believe John had been a trust banker or a banker in a trust capacity with one of our local banks for many years. Very good. So what are you going to do for your birthday?
We're going to play a game called Code with the family. What a boring game that we like.
Nice. All right. Moving on, we would like to have John Nagel give us a brief update on our sewer sale.
Very shortly, in short order. There really is anything new on the appeal by the Office of Consumer Affairs through the Commonwealth Court. The sewer system is settled in August. Soon after that, the OCA filed an appeal. Our legal counsel has advised us that that is likely to be a 12- to 18-month waiting period. So we're probably talking about late this year or sometime into 2024 is when the Commonwealth Court will hear that appeal. That's all I have to report.
Okay. Anyone? Donna? Public? Moving on to give you a brief update on the Route 30 corridor project. As you know, we applied for the 2022 RACE infrastructure federal grant last year. Were a finalist, but was not awarded that $25 million grant. The 2023 federal infrastructure grant is open and will be closing on February 28th. So we've begun putting together the same team to meet that February 28th date. We're looking at the merit criteria. We're looking at different areas of government relations to contact. We're looking at project support with letters of support from all of our congressional folks here in Pennsylvania. And we will be making a trip down to DC to the US Department of Transportation sometime in March to make a presentation to them. But the grant that we're trying to secure is for portions of the Route 30 corridor to improve safety and mobility and connectivity. And the amount is going to be approximately $22 to $25 million. So that's where we are on that one. John Nagel, I'll throw it back to you with an update on our campus master plan.
Actually, if Zach's prepared, I think he's going to load a couple of images on the screen so we can take a look at the current cost estimate for the project as well as the timeline. When the 2022 RACE application was submitted, there was an original or an initial schedule that was provided with the application. McMahon's Interim has begun to work on the 23 application. And so what you have before you, and I'm not going to go and read all this. Eventually, this is all in draft, so it's not committed at this point. But it'll, once it gets finalized, then it will be submitted to the application and we'll post it on the website. So just more of a visual to let you know that we have worked on and continue to, mostly McMahon working on the schedule for the project. And then if Zach could shift over to the latest cost estimate, the engineers are working diligently on the cost estimates that will also go along the application. And the number we're looking at currently is with $20.27, it's just slightly under $33 million, which is up from the number with the 22 application. They have been working the numbers pretty vigorously and still have room to work. The concept plan specifications have not changed. However, the plan is in a more detailed form. I think Scott did a nice job of explaining some of the other portions of this project. We have about six weeks from now to finalize our application and get it to the federal government. So we're working very vigorously on that and have a lot to do. But we also know the shortcuts because we went through this a year ago. So that's all I have to report on Route 30. Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, John. I'll add that during our presentation marathon of last year, we ended up encountering a number of different grant programs as a result of our contacts and the positive response that we had received from the different departments, including receiving a $3 million grant from the governor's office. And we're in the process of also looking at probably roughly $1.5 million of grants that are pending at this point in time, which will help offset our costs. The grant itself is maximized, maxed out at $25 million. And last year, only two projects in the state of Pennsylvania were awarded, one in Pittsburgh and one in Philadelphia. So we're pretty confident this year. Steve, I guess we'll bring you in here for some Malvern TCE site.
I'm sorry, did John provide any update on the master plan, the campus master plan?
That's my fault, Scott and Steve. Let me just give 30 seconds on that. We're actually having a meeting tomorrow, virtual meeting. We're going to talk about the campus master plan, includes the police station project, renovations to the municipal building, and also the conference station, which is to be funded, if we're successful, under a county grant, preservation partnership grant. That's, that grant of applications due to the end of February as well. And so we're going to work through all the details of that. And I'll have more information for the Board and the public at the February Board meeting. That's all I have to report on that.
Thanks, John.
All right, now we'll go on to Malvern TCE. As the agenda states, this is really an opportunity for public comment and participation that's being offered by the EPA for the Malvern TCE site. The current plan is from 1996. It needs to be updated, which the EPA recognizes. The plan is meant to capture community needs, concerns, and expectations during the cleanup process. It's in essence a roadmap to engage the community and identify our key concerns. It's not a technical document. EPA's Regional Community Involvement Coordinator, Katie Page, has reached out to us to start community interviews to update the document. And there are two options for the public to participate. One is a direct interview with Katie. She'll facilitate it via the phone. She tells me that might be 15 to 30 minutes of time at most. And the second way will be responding to the same questions she would ask you in an interview in a Word document. We will provide that Word document as well as her contact information on our website. And we'll promote the opportunity to participate on our Facebook page. She hopes to have the document updated sometime this winter. And if there's any questions, I'd be happy to respond to them.
All right. Hearing none. We'll go on to the Bishop Tube update. Again, will be brief. Our consultant, BSTI, continues to review the, well, the selected remedial action plan that DEP provided to us in the fall. But, excuse me, the probably more important news for this evening is that the DEP is planning to hold a public meeting. I've been trading phone calls with their community liaison, Rob Fogel. So I don't have all the details yet. He thinks it may be two months out. This is from a voicemail that Rob left. They've had a difficult time trying to schedule the venue. And I know they've reached out to the school district. I'm not quite sure where they stand with it. But there will be a public meeting. Sounds like it's going to be sometime in the first quarter of the year. I don't know if it's going to allow for questions and answers or if it will be a hearing format as it was last year. I'll find that out and I'll let the board and the public know. Thanks for the update. Public comment?
Deb Mobile 42 Village Way. I was wondering if we were able to obtain another $50,000 grant? I thought that there was some question that it might be available because this is a new set of proposals.
Yeah, good question, and thank you for asking. We, BSTI is to reach out to DEP. I don't know if they have, so I'll have to follow up with our consultant on that. But that's definitely something we intend to-
But that's definitely something we intend to pursue.
Thank you.
Maybe do a little arm twisting.
Chief Jaeger, you've got something to add, I believe?
Yeah, not in reference to the Bishop Tube, but as a result of numerous complaints up at Lincoln Court Shopping Center in the main entrance area between, around John and QVC and the State Store, all the way down to the Driver's License Center. Over the years, we've had numerous people who decide to park right on the sidewalk. So we've had it signed off numerous times. If you go up there, you're going to see a million signs for, it's actually a fire zone. So we've done our best to enforce it, but in the last month and a half, we receive numerous complaints, and I see it. I eat lunch up there a lot, and I see it, and I call officers up there when I'm there if I see it. But, so we've issued numerous parking tickets at the time, and being it was over the holiday season, we probably issued 15 times as many warnings. So we've been nice about it, but I just want to bring it to everyone's attention that it is a problem. In order, what it does, it blocks the view of any pedestrians, which everyone walking out of Giant and so forth, or pedestrians, and especially everyone who's, has a handicap placard. The handicap zone is on the other side of it, so you have to walk through that opening. So when cars park there, it makes it very dangerous for people who can't get across there quick to get out of the way. So it is a big deal, and I just want to bring it to everyone's attention because it's, it's become something where we're being called over and over, but that we are doing something about it.
At this point in time, we have no public hearings. So we move into the board motions and resolutions. Steve, Greg?
Yeah, this, this first item is just to rectify an oversight from our December meeting, which is to ratify the action we really took that evening with the appointing of Brian Rachko as captain and Jake Bailey, both of whom are in the back, as acting captain. They've been serving in those capacities, but the board just needs to make a motion to, to dot the i's and cross the t's.
I'd like to make a motion to ratify, excuse me, Brian Rachko and Jacob Bailey to the position of captain of East Whiteland Fire Department.
Second?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. It's official.
Yes, thank you. We, we, well, actually, this kind of is a segue into the, the next item with, regarding Aiden Borey coming on board. And we were in interviews with, with Brian, Greg and I, and we teased Brian, we'd have to rip that captain patch off his, off his jacket, but of course, we didn't. But anyway. All right, next item. I'll have Greg, I'll have Greg handle this one.
Thank you, everybody. So what I want to go over briefly is, in the Department of Fire and Emergency Services in late 2022, we had a full-time firefighter EMT vacancy. So at that point, we began a recruitment process. We had numerous applicants. We did initial interviews and narrowed down the applicant pool that then went on to a written examination, followed by a physical examination. At that point, anybody that passed through that process went through a competitive interview process. At that point, we interviewed the candidates, we ranked the candidates, and pleased to announce to the supervisors and everybody in attendance that our number one ranked candidate was Aiden Borey. Just some brief background on Aiden Borey. He resides in Ephrata, Pennsylvania. He graduated Ephrata Senior High School back in 2019. He went through Harrisburg Area Community College's 67th Fire Academy, where he was then employed by Mannheim Township Fire Rescue in Lancaster County. Aiden's here tonight with his family, parents, sister, and grandparents here. I can say I'm very pleased to bring Aiden on board as a full-time firefighter. Just don't, we don't run into what just happened before I give him his badge. We want to go ahead and vote on that.
Yes, yes.
We'll do it next month.
All right, we can do it.
We'll keep it going.
We can do that.
You want to make a motion, Peter?
I would love to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to offer the job of full-time firefighter and EMS position to Aiden Borey.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. I think, I think pictures are in order.
Yeah, just one more thing. Aiden's on, he's undergoing his orientation process, and he has been assigned to the B platoon under the direction of Captain Rachko. The rest of his crew is acting captain, Jacob Bailey, and firefighter Christopher Plumley that are also in the back.
So Aiden, I have one question. All, all the volunteerism that you've done in the, in the past, you're going to have time to continue that?
Absolutely.
Absolutely. Tremendous amount. Good job. What's it, pictures?
And also, one more thing on the topic, since we were on birthdays earlier. Aiden does have a birthday tomorrow, so I'd like to wish Aiden a happy birthday.
Share the cake with him.
So is he born in 1924?
Close, close.
Next on the agenda is a, for Greg to give us an overview, but we're looking at adding a new program of safety, fire safety, life safety in the township that will be positively impacting the lives of our residents as well as the property of our residents and the safety of our, our fire and EMS folks. So Greg, if you could give an overview on the, on that aspect of the inspection program?
Absolutely. The life safety inspection program initiative is something that's been talked about for quite some time within East Whiteland Township. And just to give you a brief overview of what the program would encompass, the, the fire department staff, as it stands right now, does a lot of what we call pre-planning. We go out to the commercial facilities within our community and pre-plan the buildings so we know the layouts in the event of emergencies in those facilities. And what we're noticing when we're in these facilities is we're noticing many fire code violations that could put the community owners at risk and also our firefighters at risk in the event there's a fire within these facilities. So myself, in conjunction with Steve and several other staff members, we have put together a proposal to do a life safety inspection program that will allow us to go into commercial businesses within East Whiteland Township and point out these very important life safety problems within the facilities. This program would get us out in the community more, it would make our firefighters safer, and most importantly, it would make our community safer. So that's a brief overview of the program.
Again, it's, it's, it's to provide safety for everyone involved, so we're looking forward to this being implemented for us. So for all of the folks that are going to be contacted, please look at this as a very positive inspection rather than anything other than that.
And this will focus on the commercial properties. Nobody's going to be knocking on anybody's home door, to be clear.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's right. This is not a residential property rental inspection program. That's not what this is. So you're correct, Rich. I, I just want to recognize Mark Moses helped with this. Mark's on the call, and also one of our newer firefighters, DJ Matthews. Those two with Greg, they're the ones that really put it together. I was just kind of providing higher level comments.
Next, we'd like to have some input here, overview of the revision to the employee manual.
Now, yeah, I'm, I'm sorry, Scott, I'm going to interrupt, and we're, items four D and E that are on the agenda, we're, we're going to table them and bring them back in subsequent months.
We will bring, moving towards planning and development.
Can I interrupt for one second?
You certainly can.
Okay, so on 4C, do you need to vote on that? Because you didn't. Just so we know, or clear.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
4C? Do you need to vote on that?
Vote to formally move forward with that.
Because you didn't, okay.
Rich, you want to make a motion?
Yeah, I'll make a motion to formally move forward with the implementing the life safety inspection program by the fire company.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
Thank you, Captain. This is a problem when you print out the early version.
Never printed out the early version.
Never.
It's late until the night up. We used to want it in front of things.
Moving on to Zach on the planning and development side.
Sure. So we do not have any land development or subdivision applications that are positioned for action this evening. We also do not have any that are looking to review or request authorization to draft a resolution. We do have four applications that are requesting an extension to carry them into subsequent months' meetings. The two projects on 9 Maillan Road, we've, since the last meeting, we've had a site visit with the engineer. We've begun reviewing some existing environmental information. So they have requested an extension to carry it forward to March 31st. They will likely be on next month's agenda. The school district, they've got a series of review letters from a previous submission. We are working through some of those items with them. They expect to resubmit shortly and be on future months' agendas. And same with the Schuldice hernia repair at 30 Lancaster Avenue, working through some stormwater management compliance issues with them, and they will be on in February and March. So if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer anything, but.
No, I think they're pretty.
Deb Mobile, 42 Village Way. My questions concern the projects at 9 and 10 Maillan Road. Have we received any of the information concerning the testing which the, the current owner claims was done, the environmental testing? Have we received that as a township?
Yeah, so we've received some of the reports. We've actually initiated our own file review and review of some available information through DEP and some of the corresponding data that we had through some of the previous reviews of the Bishop Tube proper site. So we have received some information from the applicant and taken our own initiative to.
Okay, but not all of the information that they said they would make available?
No, I do not believe, I don't know that they gave us an exact list of what they would provide, but no, I don't think we've received all of that.
Is it possible that that information can be made available on the township website so that the residents and those of us who are concerned about what's going on over there can look at the, the depth of, of what kind of testing was done?
Sure, so I'll defer to the township solicitor on, on that matter. We have received the draft report at this time, so I don't know if there's any issue with posting that information online, but I would just ask Bernadette to weigh in on that.
I think you and I have to take a look at it. We just literally got it today before we can post it on the website.
Okay. Well, then, then let me just make a few quick comments in, in reference to that. Once again, you know, every time that this group comes before this township, there's a question about information that's needed, often by the supervisors, stuff that I didn't even realize you guys knew. And the next meeting comes, and it's still not made clear again. And then the, the owner cries, you know, oh, woe is me, you're holding us up too long, we're going to lose money, when they're not giving us the information that they indicated was there. They indicated that the necessary environmental testing was there, and I think it's very important that we get the testing. I think it's important that we know what type of testing was done. We need to know what contaminants were tested for, and I would like to know who performed the actual tests, what the qualifications were that, of the group that's performing it. This property is inherently linked with the Bishop Tube property by close proximity, by the fact that this was part of the original proposal that, you know, when I came, God, how many years ago was that, and said to you, we are going to get to be very good friends. Does anyone remember me saying that? Rich does. I said, yes, we're going to get to be very good friends. You know, it was part of the property that we had concerns about. It has been linked in the past to Bishop Tube. Bishop Tube used that property. It was originally one property when they came and proposed all of the planning. So the fact that, you know, we're now getting stuff in piecemeal, again, continues to have me concerned. I think that the, the, since the township residents do have concerns about it, I think that it really would be of great benefit to put that information on the website along with any other environmental information that's going on in the township so that we, you know, can start to formulate intelligent questions for you and not just stabs in the dark. Thank you.
Zach, should it be mentioned about BSTI?
Yeah, that's what I was referring to with our environmental consultant having performed some additional work. There's an agenda item later on in the agenda just to ratify their proposal to, for their time committed to that review of available information.
Just to make you aware, Deb, that township is doing its due diligence to hire an expert contractor to go over those environmental reports. expert contractor to go over those environmental reports as we, none of us claim to be experts in this matter.
BSTI, they're the ones that are going through the DEP file review?
Yeah, that's correct. So they're very familiar with the background.
Has the file review been scheduled yet? I know you have to make an appointment and all that stuff.
So we actually have a draft report at this point, so they've completed their review of available information.
Anything at DEP relevant, they've had a chance to go through.
Yeah, I want to look back at the report just to be sure exactly where some of those things were left, but they, yes, they've been able to sort through some of that information. But to Deb's point, we did not get a big stack of information from the applicant. We got some, but we've taken it on our own initiative to see what we can find else out there that kind of points to the background of sites.
Great. Okay, good.
Hi, Barbara Arnold, Fonstock Road. Just a couple of quick follow-up questions on that. I'm just looking at my notes from the last meeting. I had down that the township engineer was going to review the drain system that the applicant wants to use, so is this part of the information you're either waiting for or reviewing now?
I'm not actually sure what you're referring to, the drain system or the...
Stormwater measures you're talking about? Yeah, I mean, I guess that would have been part of the initial application, correct? And reviewed, nine or 10?
10.
10 is on the same side as Bishop Two.
Okay, yes.
No, nine is on the same side as Mallon Road. Yeah, so we reviewed their stormwater management design and calculations. That's all been part of the review up until this time.
Okay. And then my other question was, Scott, you said that you wanted to walk around the property with the gentleman one more time? I just wondered if you'd had that opportunity since...
Zach and I and the representatives walked the property yesterday in its entirety, both nine and 10, for about an hour and a half.
Great. I just wanted to make sure that they did do that with you.
Yep, we did.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Has, do we know if the NPDES has been approved by Conservation District and kicked up the DEP yet? Okay. Do we know if Conservation has finished their review? Okay.
Basically, what he said was that we have not received notification that it's gone to DEP. They had been working through technical, so they're into the technical review portion of the review. It's not just an administrative, did you get everything in in your application? So there are technical comments that I believe they're currently working through. It has not been approved.
And we do get copies of the Conservation review letters, right? Every township does.
Correct.
Okay, I think we actually have a question. Brian Johnson, did you want to say something?
Yeah, I do, actually, because it is basically, I do not have the verbal way to pronounce and then go whatever you're saying, but I am a mechanical engineer. I work in two companies with that chemical that was in that situation, what's going on there. Maybe people that are purchasing that product are not a product. I mean, the land to produce something or they want to make something or have something going on in that area right there, that land that is right now, I'll stop with the clock, help. Anyway, I gotta give you a sec for a minute. Anyway, all I'm trying to say to you is to the level of the toxicity, the chemicals that are there, the flow that's going to come from that, from the people that are trying to purchase the land up above, whatever they're going to try to make, if that water or whatever they're going to do runs down, that flow of whatever's there that runs through that chemical of Bishop Two is going to go through all the residents down through Lancaster and down below. And that is a problem. And I wish I had a better way to explain it more than I can, but I understand what's happening right there. I wish I could really report it and do what I can. I have almost paralysis on that level where I can't do anything anymore. I do know the validity of what's happening there. It's terrible. And I do know that people died. They don't go on to the ramifications of all the people that have died from that situation that has been from that company. You have Peter Hart, and I had a lady that was on Fonstock, her husband worked there. She was probably the level of age between 80 and 80, and her husband died from there. It goes on and on and on. And I don't think you on the board understand what's happening with that situation that's there. You sit and walk around that property, do whatever you did. You don't really understand that there's a little river there, a little creek. I shouldn't say river, creek. And all those chemicals, and it's not just from the tank, from the chemicals in there, there are other chemicals involved. Those chemicals are now flowing through that and have gone through and actually gone across Lancaster Avenue, and there were people across that way on other areas that have also had cancer or have also passed away. It goes on and on and on. And I'm going to leave it at that, but I really think you need to, you know, you're asking for these engineers or you're saying this or saying that. I'm a mechanical engineer. I got it with that chemical. I know what's going on. And it's also not just that one chemical, there are other chemicals that were there in that company. And that it, it's to a level that you don't really understand. You're going to wait for somebody else to say this and say that, or, you know, somebody's going to buy this or buy that. It's all about M R A Y, and I really, really wish and hope and pray that you really see the reality of what's happening there. It's not good. That is a toxic mess that is transferring from that company that's going through and through and through. And it's actually probably going in more and more areas that you really want to know. I'm going to leave it at that. That's it, I'm done.
Thank you. Don, anyone else? Any other questions, concerns? So would you like to, I think, this is kind of an issue where we've talked about in detail, but I think the motion to extend the extension of time, Rich, would you like to call for all of them?
Sure. Yeah, I'll make a motion.
Ashley, can I ask you a quick question before you do? Zach, looking on the agenda, on the agenda, it indicates March 23rd, but the letters I have say February. Do we get different letters from, for nine and 10?
Let me just confirm quickly. I had listed this on the agenda previous to receiving them, and I made them aware of what the date was that I listed. So I know at the last meeting, there was talk of extending to the following month, so I don't know if that... One second, I apologize for that.
The two letters we have in here for nine and 10 are both February 15.
Interesting. Okay. Well, then we should amend the point to that. So they're on for, that would be, that's one week after the February board meeting?
Right, so...
I will follow up with them and get a conversation going about a realistic timeline for this. I apologize for that. That is not the date that I discussed with them, so...
When you make the motion, Rich, could you note that?
The extension is to February 15, based on their letter.
Yeah.
Okay, make a motion to extend the time to render a decision on nine Mallon Road to February 15th, 2023, 10 Mallon Road to February 15th, 2023, Great Valley School District, 5th, 6th Grade Center to April 30th, 2023, and the Schuldice Hernia Repair Center, extension to March 31st, 2023.
Do I have a second, Peter?
Excuse me, I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All pass.
No problem. The next item here on the agenda related to requests for final release of financial security for three land developments. The first is the Great Valley Crossing project by Toll Brothers on Church Road. The second is a reserve at Great Valley on Flat Road, also a Toll Brothers project. And 40 Liberty Boulevard, that is a, was one of the parking lot expansions that we reviewed on Liberty and Swedesford a year or two ago that they're, they've completed their project. They had held off to finalize a few landscaping items recently. So each of the, I turned off my own mic, sorry about that. Each of these is requesting final release at this time. We've inspected the improvements. They've been constructed per the plan, and Arrow is recommending final release of the remaining security, which is outlined here on the agenda. So happy to answer any questions on any of those if you'd like.
Just a technical question, because this is the first time that I recall seeing bonds. How does that work? Is it just we read? We send a letter terminating the bond?
Yeah, we, so when we receive a request, we inspect the work to make sure it's been completed. There's a construction cost estimate that delineates, like line by line, they've installed X number of feet of pipe, or they've done X number of square feet of pavement, things like that. We then reduce the remaining balance on that and write a letter to the bond company stating that the work has been completed and they can reduce basically the basis of that bond. Okay.
Is the final release. We don't get involved with interim releases.
Correct. Periodic releases as work's completed, we release them administratively.
That's fine.
Okay, we have a question.
Okay, Donna.
Okay, Brian, you can go ahead, please.
Hi, Brian, glad to see you all, folks. Happy to be here. And to the gentleman that's determining 100, Calvin Coolidge, was present. Think about that. No, there's a major issue of releasing these funds when my neighbors at 112, we live, I live at 107 Forside Road, at 112 Forside Road have sinkholes and unbelievable inconvenience from development from, and I don't know what engineer signed off on it, I know we got an email today about it, that still isn't fixed. And we're, I think the funds are $283,000, something to that effect, to release. To remediate what their home is and what the issues they've had will exceed seven figures. So absolutely not. It's outrageous to think that you should release that, let alone someone that signed off on it. I mean, every three months, we have a construction crew at the backhoe, digging, filling, filling, and these people can't park them in the driveway. Now, I don't mean to sound out, but I need to put it on record just so that in fact, when it does go to the lawsuit, that it's on record and that you folks are aware of it. And we'll see how they respond. So my neighbors are on record too here saying, okay, so they'll speak to it, but I want to let you know that it is absolutely ridiculous to even think that you would release funds when it's not complete. It's not safe. Understand?
What was the address that you talked about in the beginning? We missed that.
Say it one more time.
Could you repeat the address that you're talking about?
107 Forside Road. My neighbors who have been in convenience, besides, there are more neighbors that have these sinkholes issues, but my neighbors live at 112 Forside Road. And that's Malburn, Pennsylvania, 19355.
Which development is Forside in?
It's Jayland Crossing. I'm not aware. Oh, here, we got a bunch of them for you, folks.
Great, very good, so it's... What process does, do you go through to review and determine and advise us whether to release the escrow?
Well, the escrow is for the improvements on the land development plans, and I think what the person online is talking about is a sinkhole in somebody's yard on their private property.
Wrong. That's not what I'm talking about. This is common area that's used. So keep going.
Can we, can we tone the attitude a little bit here? We're trying to help. We're trying to ask questions, okay?
Oh, wait, you mean eight?
Yes.
No.
Fine, then we'll move on. Show some respect, please. Al, can you comment as to whether, can you review and go out and look at that property again at some point?
We can look and see if the sinkholes have to do with any of the improvements or the infrastructure that was done.
Here's our issue is, we're out of time. So whether we do anything tonight or not, it's deemed approved. The final release is deemed approved. We have, we're under the NPC, we're limited in time. So it came in, I think, December 14th, and you got it pretty quickly. So once it goes to Al, it's 30 days, and then we have 15 days. It won't make it to the next meeting.
Yeah, we've reached out to, obviously, when we got the final release authorization from Al, we made the HOA attorney aware, because they had requested to be notified if we were to release any more funds. So we made him aware last Friday when we received Al's authorization letter. We received late this afternoon a copy of a transition study, which we had not seen previously. We've not had a chance to review it to see whether there are issues with any of the proposed improvements. Oftentimes with one of these transition studies, there's sort of a mix of, I'll say, private property issues, warranty issues, things that have maybe not, maybe they're experiencing issues after we've already released money, things that, like a sidewalk that could be cracked after we've already released funds for, things like that. So oftentimes what we do is we take that report, we review it against the approved land development plan and the improvements that we've inspected to see if there's any crossover. Oftentimes, they are not really things that we would flag or deny based on the approved plan, things that are delineated sort of in that construction cost estimate that I discussed earlier. So we haven't had a chance to review that. We did reach out to Toll Brothers to see if they'd be amenable to an extension to carry this forward to the next board meeting so that we could explore it in a little more detail and see if there is any overlap. They were not inclined to grant that extension. So to Bernadette's point, we really don't really have the option to delay this further. If we do not release the funds tonight, we would, again, be a deemed approval, and we would be forced to release these funds, so...
But under the circumstances, if an applicant requests release of the final funds and there is an issue, then we're not required to release all the, an issue upon inspection...
Right.
Then we don't have to release all the funds.
Correct. And I think that's an important distinction as well. If we, if Al had discovered an issue, let's say with curb or sidewalk, something that we had secured funds for, he would have flagged it, and he would not have authorized it presumably, right? So I know Al's an experienced engineer. But my point is that if we had identified those issues during the field inspections, we would not have authorized release. There would have been remaining funds, and therefore, it would have just been an interim sort of administratively issued release.
Bernadette, can I ask a question?
Yes.
If, if the transition study that has been provided for one of the neighborhoods, and I understand the other transition study is still not been provided to us, if it raises issues with the public improvements that for some reason we were not aware of, is there language in our land development agreements with the developer that requires them to, you know, correct the issues?
I'd have to take a look at it, but normally what ends up... I'd have to take a look at it, but normally what ends up happening is is because in both of these, I believe the only things being dedicated to the township or offered for dedication were sewer and the roads. They're the only two being offered for dedication. So I guess what I'm getting at is what Al's looking at is kind of limited in the sense that what are the public improvements that we escrowed for would likely be the curbs, the sidewalks. It's not the it's not the sticks and bricks of the house and the lawn. Do you know what I'm saying? And Al could kind of explain. I could look at the land development agreements, but I don't think they're going to address that specific issue.
I'll be kind.
Well, yeah, I understand, Bernadette. I'm speaking to the public improvements and not the not the individual lots and and issues with.
Oh, I see what you're saying. Um, no, it's the issue is is if they were being dedicated, we've got the maintenance bond. And here, nothing's being dedicated. It's all being owned either, I'm assuming, by the HOA or the homeowner. I don't know how their common elements break down. We're not getting anything.
Steve, is your question that if we were to release the funds and then upon review of this transition study, if there was there were issues with the the funds that or the improvements that we had said were acceptable, could we then withhold those from the remaining balance?
Well, I yeah, I don't want to continue to beat on this. So I suggest, Bernadette, that, you know, let me ask you and Zach outside of this meeting, but sometimes these agreements have language that, you know, require the developers to to make such repairs to the public improvements. So Zach, you're you're close to what I'm asking, but I don't want to delay the the meeting.
When was your last inspection? Do you recall, Al?
It was just prior to me preparing the letter.
But the fundamental but the fundamental difference is that this gentleman is saying the the issue is on an individual's property versus versus what you're looking at is the common area, correct?
We're strictly looking at the line items that have been unpaid yet, have not been released yet. So it might be, for instance, the wearing course of the pavement on the roadway. It might be the mailboxes or things like that. It's it's the last things that are on that release are the final details that they put in. It's not, you know, the pipe, the sewer pipe, for instance, that's already been released when they installed the sewers and that. But what we're looking at is strictly the line items that have not been released, specifically those line items.
$273,000 of it was the township 10% security. And that was 10% of the entire escrow, correct? That's how they come up with that?
Yes.
So we got the survey as we got the as-built survey?
Yes.
And when you were out there, you didn't see any sinkholes being referred to in the escrowed area?
No, not not for the items that we were looking at, no.
Right. Did you see any other sinkholes that you noticed?
I can't really answer that. We had our one of our field people do the.
Oh, so you weren't out there?
No, I was not physically out.
Okay.
I just.
So we have several questions. If you want to go there, you want to finish your questions first, I just want the audience to know, I mean.
Are there any other are there any other funds being held at that this this would be the?
This is the final.
Final, final, yes, yeah.
I just want to make one brief point. We had been in contact, we've been with contact with the HOA on previous issues. We made it known that if they had prepared a transition study that we would review it. Some of that correspond, the most recent correspondence that I can think of was probably this past spring or even summer, but we didn't receive the transition study until today. It kind of puts us in a bit of an awkward position. We knew that they were preparing a transition study at some point. This is a common practice, but we hadn't been provided with it. I didn't find out until today that one existed or had been recently being completed. So, you know, it's not like we found out on Monday or even Tuesday that such a report existed, which would have given us some time to maybe coordinate with Toll Brothers. So, you know, I'm not trying to shift blame or point fingers or anything, but it puts us in a bit of an awkward position to have this report delivered only today when we know that it was initiated several months ago. That didn't really give us a whole lot of time to respond and react. So whatever that's worth, we can review the transition study and if there's issues, we can explore them. But the other piece of this that I think is worth mentioning is that Toll Brothers has an entire transition team. They have an entire wing of their their organization that deals with these types of issues. Some of them they may find are warranty type issues, some that they need to negotiate directly with the HOA to repair or replace that may not even be relevant to the list of improvements that that we've inspected or were required to inspect. So I know this is sort of a jargon-y discussion. There's a specific process in place that may not be, you know, widely understood, but I just want to make that point.
Were you going to say something, Al?
No.
No, my only other point is is when this came in, it was December 14th, and I believe you got it the same day the township got it, which is, yeah. And so the timing of it just falls. I counted it up, it's 57 days if we get to February, the February meeting. And I think we're permitted 40, 55. And so it that was my that was the issue, which was why we were calling Allison Zero at 5 o'clock today. Zach and I called Allison, who represents, and we're like, can you give us an extension? And she she went to Toll and they weren't amenable to it. So we made an effort.
So from a legal standpoint, what would be what are our options or are there none?
And I'm assuming they'll take the position it's deemed approved because the time will have passed by the February meeting. You could release it today. Again, if you do nothing, maybe Toll will work with us. I don't know. But my guess is they're just going to say we've got the.
So if we did nothing today, we don't lose any rights tomorrow or into February, two days before the next meeting?
Yeah, so basically what the this is under 510 of the NPC because I was looking at it today. It basically says if the municipal governing body fails to comply with the time limitations provisions contained herein, all improvements will be deemed to have been approved and the developer shall be released from all liability pursuant to its performance guarantee bond or other security agreement.
And that won't be effective until February 6th, it looks like from my calculation.
It's either the 6th or the 7th, yeah.
At the second, the second Wednesday of the month is the 8th.
Yep.
So we're one day. And if we don't act on this today at all and the engineer goes out and double confirms that this is all releasable, we could do nothing. If he finds something that it should be withheld, we could always, you know, do a quick special meeting if we wanted to.
That would be one of your options.
Okay.
Can we get a commitment to get out there tomorrow?
Well, I can.
Sometime in the next couple of weeks.
I can get out there, but again, I'm going to be looking at the line items that have not been released. We'll be looking at those items.
It'll give us more time to review the transition study too. And if the transition.
Keep in mind, we only have the one.
Right, yeah, I think that's an important point, Bernadette. We have one report. We've told that the other one is nearing completion. I'm not sure the exact phrasing, but it's not complete at this time.
And I believe the belief that what we have is the Great Valley Crossing.
Correct, yeah, the first one listed.
I think we got it late this afternoon.
Well, that's the only one at issue right now.
Right, I believe that's correct, yes.
I mean, I'm okay waiting and not doing anything yet. We're don't hurt ourselves.
Yeah, I think that so the only thing I'd point out relative to the the calendar math that that we've all we're kind of doing today. So that assumes that the that 55-day calculation from December 14th to, let's call it, February 7th or 6th, that includes 10 days. The way it's listed is that the applicant makes a request, provides it to the township. Township has 10 days to provide it to the engineer. The engineer has 30 days to review it and make a recommendation. Township has 15 days to make a recommendation back, you know, report its findings back to the applicant. That assumes that's full 55 days. Arrow received it at the same time as the township. So we're assuming we have 55 days, whereas a more conservative estimation would be that we have 30 days or maybe 45 days to act, which would not carry us to the first week in February. We would have to act more quickly as in like.
Well, Al would have to get us something pretty quick.
Could you say that it was 30, Arrow would have 30 days to review it and make a recommendation from when we receive it from the township?
Which would carry us like, you know, essentially to like the end of the week or the weekend.
And then the from the time that Arrow gives you the recommendation, you have 15 days to township has 15 days to act on it. So what date was our recommendation? Because it's 15 days from that.
Friday, which would have been the 6th.
If you have 15 days from that, that puts it at the 21st of, correct?
I'm sorry, when did when did your report come in, Al? I thought it was pretty recent.
On the 6th.
Saturday the 21st.
So if you have, I'm sorry, what was that?
It would be Saturday the 21st would be that 15 days following your recommendation.
15 days from the date that we submitted the recommendation. We submitted it on the 6th. 15 days from that would be January 21st. So that would be the deadline.
10 days from now. Right. So we're in the same boat. If we take no action now, we don't lose any rights. We have a little time.
Yes, but not till February is what I'm saying.
Not till February, but.
Right.
Good.
And the other thing would be that if we're keeping to that, the 30 days would be January 13th for you. So you got one report in. If you're going to give us a supplemental, we need it quick.
For the other project. The HOA would have to provide us their other report quickly, you're saying?
Well, we have Great Valley. No, what I'm saying is under the NPC, he has 30 days from when he receives it to make a report. He's made the report, but if he's going to supplement it, I would do it within the 30 days.
I see, yes.
The only concern is Great Valley Crossing. It's not the other one.
I don't I'm not sure.
Yeah, I don't think we've truly opened it up to public comment here, but it does seem like the issue that's been raised thus far is Great Valley Crossing.
Right. Well, then that to me then is the only issue to me for tonight.
So do you want to field some questions? I mean, there's some questions here. Were you done or not yet? Go ahead.
Well, as I'm quickly reading this on my phone, sorry, as I'm quickly reading this on my phone, the HOA's transition report says we have recognized the concerns of some residents of the Great Valley Crossing community with localized sinkholes. Our office attended a Zoom meeting with the association where some of these concerns were expressed to evaluate these concerns. An inspection was completed on December 28, 2022. The results are summarized as follows. Lot 7, number 112 Forside Road, there's a small sinkhole developing in the paved driveway adjacent to the driveway apron sidewalk within a much larger area of a previously repaired sinkhole. There was no visible evidence of continued sinkholes in Forside Road in this vicinity. There's a lot 16, 121 Forside Road. There is one small repaired driveway sinkhole and one small sinkhole developing at the corner of the driveway lawn interface. Lot 6, 114 Forside Road, there was no visible evidence of sinkholes next to the sidewalk or anywhere or anywhere else. Lot 3, 124 Forside Road, there was no visible evidence of sinkholes next to the sidewalk or anywhere else. Lot 32, 122 Sweetwater Way, there is no sidewalk along this lot. There was no visible evidence of sinkholes in this vicinity. And Sweetwater Way Detention Basin, there was no visible evidence of continued sinkholes within this detention basin. So it looks like the HOA's, they've got two. Lot 1, Lot 7, 112, and Lot 16, 121.
And only one refers to a sidewalk. The others refer to driveway on the lot.
That's what it appears, yeah.
And our escrow does not cover driveways on the lot, correct?
Right, okay.
Al, I'll forward this to you.
I've got that report. I received it at 4 o'clock today.
I'm sorry?
Are you talking about the transition report?
Oh, did you get it also?
I, yeah, it was like 4:00, 4:30 today.
Yeah, it came in.
I didn't get a chance to look at it, though.
All right, Donna, we'll we'll open up to the public.
Okay, I believe it's, and I'm sorry if I'm pronouncing it wrong, but is it Kemmy? You can unmute yourself.
Yeah, thank you. Um, so my name is Kemmy, I'm the resident of the board of the HOA. Thank you for your time and I appreciate you taking some time to deliberate on this. We would really like that you hold off releasing these funds so that you can have your engineer come out. The issue is not just the sinkhole. If you look through the transition study in detail, there's still some other issues in terms of the sidewalk and some grading issues and some water management system. So I think it's best if one of the engineers can come out to see the site once again because I think the issue is whenever a toll is asked to do a repair, usually there's a delay and that's what's really delayed the transition study because we kept waiting for tolls to be done so that we can have the transition study done afterwards. And then maybe the engineer comes in and toll comes out to fix it. And sometimes this fix, this thing that are fixed gets broken against the walkways. They've been refixing some of the walkways a couple of times. So I think this needs to be looked at so that I don't have to come on board and for the for the for the township and also for the HOA. So we really try and make sure that toll does what they have to do and gets things fixed before they leave the the community. And I'm here to know about a couple of our neighbors that are over the line. And as you can see, some of the neighbors that are very affected and very passionate about this happening. So we just would like to implore that you please take some time to review what toll has done to save it before we release any of the funds. Thank you.
Okay, Brian, you can unmute yourself, please.
Uh, well, hello, I'm sorry. I'm very passionate. I love my neighbors. You know, it is not a matter that it's a, the one gentleman was saying, to just pride a lot in a yard. It's the street. It's it's insane. I mean, my, and I can only attest to the one neighbor, so I'm sure they're going to speak and talk at 112 Forside Road that, oh my God, I could never imagine purchasing a home and I can't park in my driveway or use it. Or when they come to fix it or try to remediate it, two months later, it's worse. Um, you know, I emphasize what I've stated, what the young lady prior to me just stated, what's the harm? The money's in escrow. If it's another month, and it's okay, it'll be released. It's Toll Brothers, but my clients aren't her clients. My neighbors aren't Toll Brothers. They're hardworking people. And if something needs to be remediated, they don't necessarily have the funds to go and fight and litigate something. And this is why you keep these in in escrow, that hey, this is a problem and we need to use this quarter million dollars to fix it. And that's all I have to say. Everyone have a blessed year and I'll listen to everyone else. Thank you.
Thank you. Donna, another one?
Yes, Samuel, you can unmute yourself, please.
Yes, um, hello, good evening. My name is Daniel, I'm the resident of 112 Forside. Um, so as as Brian said, I mean, this this has been a kind of ongoing issue, you know, moved here two years ago and kind of been going through the same sinkhole issue. And the area has been addressed and three months later, came right back in and they have to come back in, you know. So this is an ongoing issue. They just. They just, um, I guess delayed the, between October and November, the, the sidewalk was redone, this was the second time. But the first time it was redone, the whole thing caved in again. So, you know, a word had been done, but I had been guaranteed, oh, you release the money and three months from now, my sidewalk and my driveway is back in. So, you know, I, I, I do object to, you know, releasing this money to Toll Brothers until further inspection is done. And in addition, you know, when they come out to do this work, no paperwork is shared. We had no idea what had been done. We know that they show up, they do something and they go away and lay down, there's, you know, that there's additional ongoing issue, so. And that's what I have to say on, sure.
Thank you, Daniel. Al, and, and, and Zach, can I, can I ask this? If, if what Daniel's saying, what Daniel's saying is pertaining to the sidewalk, okay, so there's an issue with the sinkhole in the sidewalk, it's identified, they fix it, months later, the issue reappears. What type of liability underneath our agreement with these, with these bonds? And does, can we hold Toll to rectify the issue?
After we-
No, I mean, in the fact that we identified the issue or the issue was identified, they fixed it, but the problem comes back. Where, where does that fit in, in terms of the liability under, under, under our arrangements?
Once we release, uh, once you release the improvements bond, we're done. Because we only get a 18-month maintenance bond for the items being dedicated to the township. These side, nothing's being dedicated to the township here. So there's no money once we've released this money, because nothing's being dedicated. It's owned by the, either the homeowner or the HOA. They have, they'll have to deal with it.
If in the future the roads were to be dedicated, and that would be the only thing dedicated, then from the moment of dedication, we have an 18-month warranty.
Right, we would make, if the offer's out there, the township accepts it, right, we'd want that 18-month maintenance bond.
I guess that answers that.
I, I pulled up the escrow release request spreadsheet that they submitted. And just, just to give you an idea of the items that were listed, requested for release, the lion's tripping in the roadway, several trees, landscape plantings, spruce tree, survey as built, uh, walking trail, property corners, concrete monuments, and that's the list of the items that we were looking at.
Yeah, so sort of that point that Al made previously, when we release, and what Bernadette echoed, when we release funds for things that have been completed and were found satisfactory previously, we're not necessarily re-inspecting them. We're respecting the, inspecting the remaining work, anything that's been outlined on a punch list, things like that. So, you know, to your point about the sidewalk, if the sidewalk was constructed satisfactorily at one time, we wouldn't necessarily be flagging that or re-inspecting it, because they've already, we've already essentially released the money for that. I don't know if that speaks to your specific question, but-
But if it was released and after it's released, mention was made of the street, all of a sudden the sinkhole appears in the street, we just ignore it at future inspections? Isn't that where the 273, 273,716 comes in?
Well, yeah, it should.
Right, right.
You're talking about the security, the contingency?
Yeah, you're talking about the-
Partis卡an is asking that if, say, you created and you came back and you saw the work was not done properly, right? So how we can recoup our money? So like in a private business, if somebody did, you released the money, can you go through Business Bureau, Bad Business Bureau to get your money? That works in this case or not against Toll Brothers, like Bernadette? Do we, can we go through, let's say you release the money and then work was not done properly. Now, once you release the money, you're saying you cannot get it back. But there is a other way to go around to get, recoup your money? Like a bad business bureau, like in the private sector, they do that? So I don't know if my question makes sense.
What would the HOA's recourse be if they found, like during transition, it's more of a negotiation, right?
Can you turn on the mic a minute? I couldn't hear you.
Yes, sir. I think the question is, what's the recourse if there's improvements that are later found to be inadequate or flawed in some way? What's, what would be the, the homeowners association or the township's recourse to like make that right? Because I understand the transition process is a little more of a negotiation between the developer and the applicant to sort through remaining issues, which is, which is independent of our process.
You have to go back to Toll. I don't know what, like you had indicated, there's warranties involved, there's other things involved. I don't know how Toll has, uh, provide, what Toll has provided in the way of warranties to the homeowners, to the HOA. I assume the HOA's been turned over. So I don't know that Toll's involved in the HOA at this point.
Yeah, I mean, I'm still okay with not taking action on this at all. I'm happy to take the action on the other two. Having somebody go out and take a look and advise us what they say.
And Al, this was the final for both, right?
Right.
Yeah.
I'm only talking about one here. There's only one that's been raised. That's all I'm concerned about. It's all I'm concerned about. All right?
All right. Are there more questions?
There are, two other.
Go ahead, Donna.
Yeah, I can't, you guys are-
All right.
There are several, couple more questions, and forgive me, I'm gonna probably really mess this one up, but I believe it's Avind, Avind? Could you unmute yourself? I apologize, I'm not sure how to pronounce your name.
Yeah, so this is our event here from 124 Forside as well. So I just wanted to reiterate the same point to the other neighbors that have solved. So it is not only a sinkhole issue, but also certain other issues that they already talked about that are still not fully addressed. So I would actually, uh, say it's really not correct to release those funds, that's all, from my side.
Can I ask my question?
Yes, sure, go ahead. Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Yeah, sorry, my name is Madhu Dadi, I'm a great valley crossing HOA resident. Uh, so Zach and Al and Bernadette, we had a conversation back in summer, I think, or fall, about the sinkhole that opened up on the middle of the road. We're not talking about private lawn or not on the sidewalk. The sinkhole that road has collapsed actually in the middle of the road. All we have requested, actually, every time there was a sinkhole, we have requested Toll to provide a geoengineering report, how it was remediated, whether it was remediated according to the engineer's satisfaction or not. So far Toll has not provided us any reports. How can we be sure that, actually, they have done it, actually, satisfactorily? And how can you, like, ensure that road has been fixed properly? Including the sanitary, like, somewhat management lines, actually, there are issues before we have avoided. And also there are a couple of issues on the sidewalk, actually, even, uh, there are actually issues, and Toll has not, actually, worked with us, and we have raised this instance a few years back in summer. And, and this is an opportunity for us to, actually, at least, like, make sure that they follow, actually, whatever the, whatever issues we have found, at least address, right? As, as, I mean, that's all we are asking for. We are not asking for, actually, just to provide the transition report. Just address, even, provide the report that was done properly according to the engineer's recommendations. And this is not the person, especially this Samuel's mark, and it's in front of his mark, like, on the sidewalk, on the road, that the situation keeps opening up, and they never provided us any recommendation or any engineering report. And there are two sinkholes that are opened up, they never provided us anything about. I mean, what is the harm in, actually, holding off, like, engineering advice, and Toll provides a report, and you also can get to check those reports? And, and it's done, actually, remediated properly as a satisfaction of engineer or not? That's all we are asking for. And unfortunately, we just came home by a legal conference this afternoon, that this item is on the agenda today, and I'm, I'm taking the call, actually, from the airport gate, and, and, and it is hard to hear, like, a bit of a noise, but this is a critical issue, and we have been fighting with Toll, like, last two years, to at least, like, give us some, some, somewhere, actually, where we can, uh, be, I mean, satisfactorily, like, done or not, just give us the reports, that's all we are asking for. And, and if you fill out and, actually, request Toll to provide those reports, that will give us some satisfaction, actually, to where that was done, remediated properly or not. There are a couple of other items too, like, somewhat report, like, also the sidewalks, and also, uh, there are some patches, actually, where we have, uh, like, we have asked him to return, but it was not, um, so that's, that's what we included in the report.
Yeah, I would just ask if there are other concerns, like the ones you've raised here tonight, if you could just send me an email and sort of summarize these for us? You know, we're sort of at a, we're trying to catch this on the fly here. I know we've talked about some of the ongoing issues, but if you could summarize those and sort of supplement the transition study, we can at least try to understand what the concerns are and try to work with Toll to get some better answers.
Zach, do you want to give him your email address?
Certainly. So it's on the website, if, if you can't catch it here on the fly, but it's, so my name is Zach Barner. It's B as in boy, A R N E R. So the email is zbarner, Z B A R N E R, at eastwhiteland.org. I apologize if I spelled my own name wrong.
Yeah, I actually put it on the chat for everybody, that's okay. I mean, we can all summarize and send something, um, like, this is, this is our event here. I spoke before, we can actually summarize something, and put it together and send you an email of all the pending issues in our community. There is actually, like, everyone would actually laugh if I tell you this, there's actually a speech again that they put on the main road, uh, on the church road that leads to the, uh, that leads to the community, and the speech again is actually at level with the road it serves, which you can actually, it will be very obvious even if you enter our community. So it is supposed to be regulating and it's supposed to do something, but it's actually at level with the road. So there is nothing, actually, the, the thing that they're able to serve no more for us at all. I don't know why they even build that. That had been a question for all of us for a long time. So there are several things like that, so we can all, and we can send you the list if you really want us to, but it is, there are a lot of obvious things, if you just visit our property, you will come up to know there is a lot of obvious things that are not done right, so.
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah, I think, so, but there's just, like, I mean, let's give it some time, actually, to go to-
I'm sorry. We're, we're just having some technical issue here.
No more questions, comments, right? Done?
It doesn't look like there's any more questions or comments.
I, I wish there was a point in time, it wasn't at the last minute as it is here, but we'll try to accommodate this in the way that we've been kind of, uh, our solicitors is kind of indicating is the avenues that we have, and that would be to not release the Great Valley Crossing in the amount of the $285,000. So if you're in agreement-
By not making a decision on it, not rejecting it, but not approving it.
Right. If you wanted to have-
Okay.
If you wanted to have a, if you wanted to have a special meeting at some point, we will certainly call Allison Zarro tomorrow. We will certainly speak with Al tomorrow and, and see what can be done.
And that being said, too, just for all the residents who are on, there will be many, many, it sounds like, many issues that will only be between you and Toll Brothers, not involving the township. Not every issue that you're finding has township involvement. Be aware of that. That's the real world, okay? Okay?
Do you want to make a motion?
Yep, I'll make a motion to authorize the final release of financial security for Reserve at Great Valley, the amount of $381,496.80, and 40 Liberty Boulevard, $222,372.38.
Do you have a second?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And we would like, again, right, Al, to, to visit the property.
Sure.
It's, we, we can, we can, we can discuss more detail if you want.
Someone be careful, it's currently 11:00. Someone be careful, it's 11:00.
Go ahead, Al. We can, we can go into more details af- after the meeting at this point in time. If that's all right with you, Bernadette? Don't we do that?
Yeah, that's fine. We'll, um, make sure he has the report from the transition team.
Okay. Want to take on E this time, Zach?
Yeah, so this is just sort of an action to, really just to execute the, the written decision based on the vote that was taken at the last month's meeting for the conditional use application of Chester Valley Golf Club. So we read a couple of conditions into the record at that time. Solicitor's office has drafted that. It's in a position for you all to sign here tonight, so if you have any questions on that, Bernadette or I can, can answer, but it's pretty, pretty standard, as you see all in the packet.
Looks fine.
Yeah, it does look fine. Rich, you want to?
Sure, I'll make a motion to authorize executing the decision for Chester Valley Golf Club, short course conditional use approval.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Passes. John, you're up.
I'm sorry, thank you. Uh, on January 23rd, the zoning hearing board will hear a application at 98 Spring Road. It's for a variance to allow an in-home occupation. It's going to be conducted in a yurt in the backyard of this property. She apparently has support of the neighborhood. We'll have the hearing and they'll make their decision that property's been posted, so the hearing will be on the 23rd. Last month's meeting, the board heard 11 Buttonwood Avenue was for the reconstruction or addition to a existing non-conforming property. They got, they gave a preliminary word of approval at that meeting, and the letter is being- being sent to the homeowners that supported their application to allow them to do that reconstruction of the property. On updates for the code department, earlier today, we got several complaints about recycling not being picked up by Blazinski throughout the township. We've been in contact with their people, and they promised pickup will be tomorrow morning. For information, there's been an uptick in inquiries about home businesses and permitted uses recently. We've been reminding the people that there is a important tool on the website that's very easily accessible. It's called the MapLink Zoning Map, which is readily accessible in the East White Land homepage under Quick Links. This supplies all the information that answers these basic questions. And last but not least, Catalyst Project has begun at Route 30 and 29. Township staff continues to monitor the progress, to ensure compliance, and has assisted in coordinating with adjacent property owners to hopefully lessen the impact to the motoring public during this construction project. So far, everything has been in compliance with all the previous approvals, and that's it.
One, 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 one thing to add, and then come up. There's been a number of inquiries pertaining to the Plainbrook Gas Station, and I know that, that our codes and staff people have viewed the property, have identified some issues, insured up, had the owners shore up some of the property. But is there an update beyond that, on that? John?
We haven't response, we haven't received response. Mark Moses and I will be revisiting the site tomorrow and coming up with a list of qualifications so we can sit, post a property, send them violation notice, and see if we can force their hand on the, getting something more substantial done to the property.
Okay. So just let residents know, we are aware, we're monitoring it, and we're trying to rectify it at this point in time. Deb, would you like to come up?
I have some concerns about the yard. A yard is a tent. It typically does not have a bathroom facility. I don't understand why we're allowing someone to put up a business in their yard in a residential neighborhood. Now, I understand that this is a licensed professional counselor, but let's be honest, I am a certified professional counselor, and that's a really broad range. Are we a counselor of, like, you know, is this like a steam bath? Is this like a sweat lodge? Or is this a, I mean, I don't, I don't understand why this is even being considered. And I guess I think the township should really go after more information. As far as the neighborhood, that's Village Way. Spring Road is Village Way, that one up there at the top? Nobody asked me. Because I will tell you right now, I would not support someone, I would support counselors being able to see people in their homes, where there are bathroom and sanitary facilities, and where it's, it's a private kind of thing. But I would not support setting up a business in the yard. It's a residential neighborhood. And they didn't, they may have asked their immediate neighbors, but they didn't ask the neighborhood. So I really think the township needs to look into this. And I, I wish I, there were, there was more information available, because now it looks like I got to go to a zoning meeting.
That is correct.
That is, yeah, that is the response.
We're just deciding whether to send Bernadette or not send Bernadette to that meeting.
Well, if, it's a residential neighborhood, and if they're asking for a variance to go it, for it not to be residential, for it to be business, my comment is no. No. And we need to send the solicitor, if that's the case.
You're entitled to make that, and get other residents who live in the village to go to the meeting.
That will certainly sway...
It's a tent!
The zoning hearing board, they're very capable.
I mean, yours are very nice tents, but they're tents. And we're not nomads, we're residential.
John, I'm just curious, how far outreach did we give to residents around this property?
The code requires that it be posted at least a week in advance, publication in the newspaper, two weeks in advance, two notices, and the applicant is required to notify basically the immediate neighbors. That's what the zone, that's what the zoning code requires that they do.
And when we say immediate...
That would be, in a neighborhood, like, that'd be the surrounding neighbors. Or it also goes on to say, if it's like a, a use that would affect by its operation a large area, that we can make the determination to, you know, require additional notification throughout the area.
So, so how many, how many houses around this property were given notice? Four?
There'll probably be five, four or five. That would be, that would be on the, that, again, that is on the applicant to deliver that and certify that to the, to the board that evening.
Yeah, that's one of the exhibits that they have to provide to the board, and the solicitor will review it and compare it to the map, make sure that the code was fulfilled, and listen to testimony. And if you want to get other neighbors involved, then that's what you'll have to do. Unless the board wants the solicitor to go, it's up to the board. I'm okay with leaving it to the zoning hearing board. It's a really small lot, they're trying to run their business. I don't know.
I would feel strongly in the judgment of the zoning hearing board, and I feel strongly in the potential participation of residents to or oppose it, and therefore the zoning hearing board hearing those calls. I don't think the solicitor would weigh in as powerfully as they would.
Okay. So Donna, I guess we are now, or... We are in public comments? Do we have any? Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. I will read it its entirety, if there's any specific questions that anyone has, pause me and ask you questions. And if anyone from the public comes on, let me know. 9A, approve the meeting minutes from December 14, 2022, and January 3, 2023. Ratify payments of the bills for December of 2022 in the dollar amount of $580,573.88. Accept the treasurer's report for November 2022. Ratify proposal from Brownfield Science and Technology for environmental conditions review for the properties on South Malin Road for price not to exceed $5,000. Consider proposal from RT Environmental Services for Phase 2 environmental assessment at 164 Conestoga Road for a price not to exceed $9,641.
Can I interrupt for a second?
You may.
Zach, is that the property across from People's Light Theater?
No, this is the property just down the road here, along the, near the Chester Valley Trail, near the Catalyst Monopole.
Oh, yes, okay. Thank you. I do remember reading that now. Thank you.
Approve final payment for compan for playground installations at the Backton Hill Park in the amount of $345,423.55. Ratify the purchase of police evidence, library, and warranty, formerly known as Motorola, in the amount of $10,914. $10,919. Approve purchase of a 2023 Chevy Tahoe for $45,000 plus upfitting. Greg? What? No, it's... No issues? Do I have, can I have a motion to approve?
Yep, make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
I can second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any other business from anyone? At this point in time, the meeting is adjourned at five minutes after nine.